Everyone, we're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Today is Wednesday, July 3rd, one day before July 4th, when we have our celebration for our country. Can we have a roll call for the record, please?
Supervisor Diomee?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Excuse.
Supervisor Bagwa?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
And Merrick Kroll.
Here. Is Bruce Henderson here today? Is somebody taking a... Anybody doing Bruces? Let's just stand and have a moment of silence and think about, you know, how blessed we are to live in the United States and this country. Okay, and with that, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right, well now move on to item number four, I mean, five, public comment. This public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Anybody on public comment? We have it. Sharon, come on up. Tell us what's going on in the exhibit here in the room.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative, and we're delighted to introduce our new exhibition here in the Sierra Room. It's titled "Fast Lane, Slow Bake." It's with two artists, Cindy Brenneman, local, and Tom Draculich from Reno. We titled the show. Cindy's watercolors are all based on her extensive travels throughout the planet. She's been to six of seven continents and does these amazing watercolor sketches while she's on the trip, takes photographs and does more when she gets home. But they're beautiful. They're very accomplished watercolors. And we love contrasting them with her narrative watercolors with Tom Draculich's abstract ceramics. We thought they were a fun juxtaposition. There's a reception for them on Friday, July 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00, right here. I know you all spend a lot of time in this room, but everybody's invited to come to the reception.
Friday or...
No, the 12th.
12th, okay.
The 12th. And I want to thank our board member Glenn Clemmer for all his help curatorially in installing all the exhibitions that we do. He's an amazing help and has a terrific eye, and I appreciate his help a great deal. We have the WNC Show. Seventeen artists from WNC is over at the brick. There is not a reception for that because school's on break right now, but we have some very, very nice artwork up by the seventeen artists. So I hope you get a chance to go over to the brick and visit Lori and John's rooms in the back, too. I passed out the essay for our new crop 2019 exhibition that's over at the courthouse. I hope you get a chance to go see that. It's by two artists. One is still an MFA student, Mark, that's Francis. Mark just graduated with his MFA. We're pretty delighted with the work. And Chris Wagner wrote the exhibition essay that you have. This last year, we just completed our year with working with five, giving, taking artist talks to 540 students in four high schools and up at Sierra Nevada College. So that's how we ended our fiscal year. So are there any questions?
Any questions, Sharon? Go ahead, go.
I just, how do artists get in touch with you to do exhibits or be able to display here, for instance?
We do not put out requests for proposals because we sort of think we get a lot, and we only have six exhibition spots a year. We use the brick for student shows. And we think we'd sort of have a lot of, tell a lot of people no with only six opportunities. So we're always looking. And if artists want to send me their images, we're always programming ahead. We need, because of our grant funding, we need to be programmed out eighteen to twenty-four months, so we're, but we're always looking.
Okay.
So, yes, send me an email. Send me things.
I will. It's not me.
Okay.
I have zero artistic ability.
Well, thank you.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you very much for the...
Thanks for keeping us up to speed on what's going on in the hearing room here. It's a wonderful idea.
Well, thank you very much.
Wonderful idea. There is one, but you know, this is terrible. But see that, see those two hanging up right there, right in front of you? It looks like one's crooked either at the top, not that one, the watercolor ones.
It is.
Yeah, it's that one. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
If you got on the back, it pulls the stuff off.
You're all right. I'm the one that's goofy.
No, it's just true.
All right.
We'll live with the crooked.
Yeah. All right, any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see anybody, so let's move on to possible approval of the minutes of June 6th. Everybody had a chance to look at those. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of June 6, 2019, as presented.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carried. Thank you. Let me see how that happened.
I forgot many, I've been, so I don't have.
Didn't come up.
Aubrey, Kathy, somebody's gonna have to click it for him. Okay.
Didn't come up.
Didn't come up?
I just hit 4-0.
So did you, were you able to join, John?
I would join, yeah. Well, no, I did join, and then I didn't get in, that's a problem. I thought I hit it.
All right, we got you.
It says. Anyway, just recording.
Good. All right. On the agenda, been asked to pull item 12, that's the library hub matter. We're gonna bring that up the first meeting in August. It's kind of an odd thing, our, the DA who's handling this will be gone the next meeting in July here, and he wants to be here, so we'll move that to August, the first meeting in August. And I don't see any other change, anybody want to have any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Then we'll take the, without objection, we'll take the agenda as published. On the consent agenda, we have one item. Anybody want to pull that for discussion? Are we okay with that one? Move. Move, motions in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried.
Aye.
All right. That worked. All right, now let's take up, Sharon, you didn't have to answer any of those questions. By the way, what happened to your arm?
She went on vacation.
I heard a story that somebody said, this is one of those trust me things, fall over backwards and then somebody will grab you.
Yeah, it's kind of a dumb story. It was the first day of our retreat, and there were twenty-seven of us. We were all getting to know each other, and the idea was to walk around the room, and somebody would say, "Oh my gosh, I'm falling," and then everybody would save you. Well, two of us said it at the exact same time. The other person was louder than I was, so the other person got saved, and they all turned around and saw me on the ground.
Well, we wasn't...
So, yeah.
All right.
That's kind of sad.
It was kind of sad. They were all very nice, though.
Okay, I mean humorous now, but sad at the time.
Yeah, I don't know if it's quite humorous yet, so.
Just still feeling it.
That's because it's not your humorous.
Oh.
Boo.
Thanks, Sharon.
Yeah, boo.
All right, let's take up, there are no items pulled from the consent agenda, so we'll take up item number 10. Carson City Airport Authority, this is for possible action regarding the draft airport master plan. Ken, you want to start us off? Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Barrett.
Beautiful day for flying, right?
Oh, it's lovely out. I don't know about you, but I'm all about this moderate summer weather. I'll take it. I think there, I have a presentation to present.
Hang on, we'll get us set up.
Yeah, so I was just gonna give you a little update of the...
Yeah, do it.
Airport open house that we had on Saturday. We did a couple of things differ this year, so we may have ruffled a couple of feathers. I was just listening to member Supervisor Barrett explain to me how when he turned into the parking lot, that he was informed that he needed to go over to St. Teresa's to park and take the shuttle back. And had I known he was coming, I may have been able to find him a location up close to the building, but I think that's what happened to a lot of the, some of the public. We had video board on both sides of College Parkway, and we also had a video board at St. Teresa's. But when you change things up a little bit, sometimes people are not totally enamored with that change. We did measure it out, it's about four tenths of a mile, so there are some people that selected to walk. But we had, through our shuttle bus arrangement, had about forty-five round trips and estimated that we took about thirty-six hundred people on the shuttle alone. And so there is another group that self-selected and walked, and so, but it was a steady crowd all day, and we moved the vendor presidents from the, normally had been on the air side of the airport, we moved it out to the land side, so that's why the parking was not available where it had normally been. And that allowed a lot more people to see that there was activity going on in the airport. And we also had our first annual Chicken Wing Challenge, which we tied the chicken wing with the airplane wing, but not at the same time. And we awarded prizes for the best overall, most original, hottest wing, and then a People's Choice Award. And the award winners were, the Bus Boy Mobile won two awards, one for best overall and most original. They had a garlic Parmesan wing and a bourbon barbecue bacon wing, which sounds pretty yummy. And then the Flat Earth Pizza had the hottest wing. And then Battleborn Social won the People's Choice Award for their chicken pop. And so I think it was a successful first endeavor, and as you know, we tied the open house and the proceeds from both the wing contests and from the open house itself are gonna be going to the Eagle Valley Children's Home. So we had, we thought it was a great, great first stab at mixing up the annual open house a little bit, and we'll see what we can do next year.
Very good. Had a lot of people.
Yeah, I think so. I think we're around six thousand.
Yeah. And you know, that was just one of many things going on that day.
Right. The epic bike ride, and then also the Mike Tyskoff tournament, and...
And the Brewery Arts Center.
Right, that evening, correct.
That evening, a lot of people. Well, hats off to you, so.
So we're gonna tell you right now, June 27th of 2020 is our next date, so don't schedule anything on that day, please.
Well, I apologize. I wasn't, I wasn't there, I was at the Gold Star Family Memorial unveiling and at the Veterans Home, kind of had to...
Busy day.
So it was a busy day. Supervisor Barrett, John?
For the record, I wanted to say I wasn't pulling an authority bigfoot. I had Doty the Wonder Dog and my wife with me, and we had a lot of errands to do that day and other things were going on, so we just moved on. It wasn't a big deal. We probably would have gone over and taken the shuttle if we hadn't had Doty with us.
No, I just, I thought it was funny that you shared that story with me, though. I appreciate that. I did, I'll, just for a moment of levity, I did have a guy as I came out of my office, come up to me and said, "Are you the airport manager?" And I said, "No, that rascal left an hour ago." He goes, "Well, you need to tell him, blah, blah, blah." And he went into me pretty good, and I said, "You know I would. He wouldn't listen to me, but I'll get that message to him."
I wonder if he could try that.
Yeah, I don't know.
A look-alike of doppelganger.
But it was fun for all.
That's good. All right, you ready to go?
I am.
All right.
Well, hey, thanks for having me here today. I know, I know that this is a big topic for everybody, as we put to rest, hopefully, in the next couple of months, the master plan process for the Airport Authority. That began in about, I want to say, January of 2018. So the process only takes about a year, but, but as we were moving through that process, we had identified that the issue of the nighttime instrument approach restriction. So just as a way of quick refresher, the Airport Authority Board moved to approve a feasibility study on how to mitigate that issue. And so the plan kind of sat on the back burner while we went through that process. And then once that was culminated, we have now enrolled that information into the master plan. And the good news is that there is a mitigation item that we can do to improve that, and now the process is how do we get it rolled into the plan and get it funded. So good news also, as I attend a couple of conferences in the last month, of which I got to sit with the Airport District Office at the LA FAA Western Region Conference and shared the instrument approach feasibility study with them, and they were very favorable in their comments. And then I was in Boston for the American Association of Airport Executive Conference, and I sat with the Assistant Administrator for the FAA under airports.
So you're probably gonna talk about it, but what is the plan for nighttime IFR?
The plan is, it's a complicated, or not too complicated, process. It's called a runway leading light system, and there are about twelve of them in operation in the United States. One, good comparison is Juneau, Alaska. It begins about three miles out from the runway with a series of lights, light arrays, there's three arrays, and they are baffled from the air, so you can only see them in the direction, if you're at the proper glide slope and in the proper range. So once you pick those up, you follow those on the visual portion of the instrument approach to the runway. And then at the runway, there's a medium approach lighting system that, you know, looks like a regular instrument landing system light that you would see like at RNA with the sequence flashing lights and light bar arrays, and that completes the approach system.
Thank you. All right.
So with that being said, oh, thank you. This convoluted drawing right here is known as the Airport Layout Plan. And so this is the only piece of the master plan that the FAA gives its approval to. The rest of the master plan, the draft, they don't actually approve it because what they don't want people to come away with is the intent that, hey, we're gonna fund everything that you've got in here. So when you, if you do not have something on the master plan, it will...
That's why you sat next to the administrator.
Pardon me?
You sat next to the administrator to fund everything that got on here.
Well, that's what he kept saying. He had his checkbook with him, so.
Good.
I stayed close with him, and we talked very attentively about this. So as you can see from that drawing, it's a conceptual drawing of what we think is gonna happen at the airport in the next twenty years. Now, it's probably hard to see from there as far as the detail, so I'll ask Hope to go to the next slide. This gives a little better presentation. Everything that you see that was on the Airport Layout Plan is on this area, and I'm gonna just cover a couple of highlights. This is a development concept. What that means is this is how we, with our planners, looked at the airport for how we think it's gonna shape out in the next twenty years. There's some red areas to the north. You'll see at the center triangle, there's some red area, the yellow areas represent hang, future hangars. And then the area to the northeast is also red. We don't own all that land on the northeast side. That's part of the area that we've decided as an organization that the land would be valuable to the airport for a couple of reasons. One, the airport is land constrained, so if we're looking at the airport for the future, we could easily develop the land that we have and be tied up at the end of that process. So in order to protect the airport for future development, we have identified areas on there that we think would be viable for future acquisition. The areas that you see also to the right of the slide that are blue above the runway, that is potential land acquisition, that's right near where the Reno-Carson lumber, or Carson-Reno lumber area is. And then down to the left and bottom left of the screen is another area around Challenger Way and Goni that has some land that we've identified. If there was ever to be a new airport in the valley, it would not be here in Carson City. There's, and I believe the municipal code, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's some restriction about building a new airport within eight miles of the existing airport, but also we're landlocked. If you look at the valley, there's not an area for future airport development. So the airport at Carson City is gonna be pretty much contained within the envelope that currently exists. If you look at the left of the slide and the right of the slide, there's some red area there around the runway and the taxiways, that indicates future runway extension. So we're looking at about six hundred feet to the west and about two hundred feet to the east, which would give us just under seven thousand feet of runway for future use.
How come we didn't do that when we extended it? When we realigned the runway and...
Well, I think, I'll give you, I can give you the answer of why it wasn't actually approved or anything of that nature, but I think conceptually, they've always looked at the airport being expanded. But you, there are certain projects, when you apply for an FAA project, you know, you gotta be very focused in what you're doing. And so the big part of that was the removal of the hill and the realignment of the runway. And also, the other thing is the FAA just doesn't give you grant money to build your, to your desire. They look for demand and safety and security. Those are really the highlights. We anticipate the future demand to, and improvement of the airport operation to have a longer runway. Right now, what that does, it would be longer for takeoff only, the landing threshold would still be the same, it'd be displaced on the west end. And the purpose for that is the RPZ, the Runway Protection Zone, and how that is impacted by Goni Road to the west. So if we have the landing threshold displaced, we don't get, we don't have a change to the RPZ, which is good, because Goni Road would not be authorized in that, and that creates a whole other kettle of fish. So, but what seven thousand foot of runway does is increases the range for departing aircraft out of Carson City. And right now, I think the limits are about Oklahoma City, so if you're heading from, going to the east coast from Carson, you're gonna have to make a fuel stop about that, that range. The shorter runway for landing is not as impactful because as your gross landing weight is usually way lower than your gross takeoff weight. So the need is really for the departure and to improve the range. So our vision for the Carson City Airport, as we're working through our strategic plan, is that Carson City Airport is really the connecting point to be a premier corporate and business aviation facility for the state government and the city of Carson and economic development. So that's what, when we looked at our design, that's conceptually what we're looking for. Additional hangar spaces for corporate and business type hangar, we believe that two hundred and twenty-plus hangars that we currently have in the field may serve our needs as the general aviation side. We do think there's some land available for smaller general aviation aircraft, but those are, of course, we're not gonna be the ones developing those. We'll make the land available for future development on that. So that'll be demand-driven, as will the corporate side. Lastly, I want to point out the realignment of the taxiways that you see on there, the areas in red that are north-south. There is a change in the FAA's design standards, and one of those standards are, is accessing the runway directly from a ramp area or parking area. So if you look at the middle, there's a taxiway that's kind of diagonal then one north-south. That's the current taxiway structure. And as you can see, if you come from the hangar area to the south, you can get directly to the runway. So their idea is that to reduce these unauthorized runway incursions is to make more turns for aircraft maneuvering on that airfield, so that it's, you're not looking at this massive strip of pavement in front of you, and it makes navigation easier and prevents inadvertent runway crossings. So that's the purpose behind that. So that's an FAA-driven, a design standard change. The area that you see in blue at the very top of the slide around the red area, that's, those are vehicle routes that we're working on, because currently taxiways Bravo and Charlie, which run north-south on the north side of the field and kind of diagonal on the upper left side of the screen, are shared right now between vehicle and aircraft use, and that's not preferred. So we're, we're looking at route circulation and how to improve that. At the very bottom of the screen, kind of hard to see, is also the takeout of what that instrument lighting system looks like, that runway leading light system. To the far right of the screen is, just past the dump, so that's BLM land, the second array is right around the dump area where there's already electrical power, and then the third one is right around Highway 50. And so that, you know, it's very difficult to see off of that screen, but I do have copies so that I can provide for the record.
Ken, mayor, may I?
Yeah, sure, go, I'm sorry.
Ken, on the, on the lighting array, is it, I, it was curious to me that it has a bend in it or a turn. Is that common? Is that...
It's not uncommon, but JFK has a, such a system that follows the bridge, and there are turns in that. What we, the type of instrument approach we hear at Carson City is called non-precision approach. It doesn't provide, it provides lateral and step-down altitudes. On the instrument landing system, there's a glide slope that the aircraft follows via radio signal. And so this approach has a, what they call a visual component to it. So once you get below the minimum, you have to be able to navigate visually to the airport, and the lighting system provides that. And it also enhances terrain clearance, just by the nature of where the lights are placed on the hillside.
And so this arrangement is preferable to a straight-in because of terrain?
We can't, we would not be able to do that because of terrain, correct.
Okay. And you said that in terms of land acquisition, it sounds like part of it is already city land, the middle...
Or the lighting system, correct.
Yeah, for the lighting system.
I believe that's correct. The area two miles out, I believe, is city land. There's a flood control system that's on the hillside there, and power is right next to that.
And then the farther one out is BLM land?
I believe that's correct, also.
So you haven't explored land ownership or right-of-way access or any of that?
We've given that a high overview, because until we get any further along, we don't want to expend any energy on that, right?
Okay. And the enclosed one, is there any private property that you'd be?
That is private property, yeah. There's some poles there, some buildings, we'd have to get some easements on that stuff and provide power.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
It's complicated, but it's something that's certainly doable. So if you would like me to continue, the very bottom of the slide, there's some multicolored dots there, that's just the area around the terminal building. And so those represent a variety of parcels of land for future development along College Parkway and on the hangar area. Obvious, to us, it's obvious that the future gateway to the airport is off College Parkway. And so our fixed base operator that provides line services and fuel, passenger pickup, drop-off, would be in that vicinity. So we, we see the current terminal building, though we've done some limited renovations for that, that's not a long-term thing. So we would look to see for our future fixed base operator to make a relocation of that area and investment in a terminal and hangar building. Currently, the FBO Office of Mountain West Aviation is at the northwest side of the field off of Goni and Arrowhead. And so you see that big ramp up there in that area where there's some, there's some lettering over, that, that is that area, and it's just not conducive to a gateway to the airport. So that's our future view of College Parkway. And of course, we want that gateway to resemble the state and reflect the state capital and the city in general, not the back forty of an airport, so. And you can anticipate some improvements along, along College Parkway. Will you go to the next slide, please? These are the short-term, long-term capital improvement program funding, based upon these priorities that we've laid out. Bottom line is, there's about thirteen million dollars in total spending in the short term that involve a variety of projects, starting with our airport fencing project that will begin in next, next year. And then we already have phased in the future of the airport lighting system in the next couple of phases. And obviously, we don't want to forget about our other primary responsibilities of maintaining our pavement, runways, taxiways. So those would be extended out just a little bit, but more importantly, with, with our priorities, the way they're set, we're really looking for the FAA to get involved in a safety standpoint and helping us get this project going, thus the meeting with the Airport District Office and the Assistant Administrator, Associate Administrator for Airports. So there may be some requests from us to this board, as well as our congressional delegations about getting support for this project, and so you can anticipate some discussion on that.
Are there any grant applications in pending right now?
Just the one that you see at the very top of the page, which is for the fencing project. And that will close the north end of the airport off. Currently, there's cattle fence there, and that'll put... Currently, there's cattle fence there and that'll put, uh, five-foot barbed wire, a five-foot chain link with three-strand barbed wire all around and upgrading the gate and access control system. Pretty big project.
We have any difficulty with wild horses getting on the airport?
Uh, we found some road apples in the parking lot, but not on the airport. So, so far, so good.
Right.
Hope, thank you. So the intermediate projects, it's just as, when we started getting into intermediate and long-term, these are really like your wish list, so you just kind of go through and, and figure out what Santa might, I mean, what, uh, may work out in your future. So we've, we've looked at, uh, uh, moving taxiways to accommodate the runway expansion and extensions and those sort of things. And so those are capital-intensive projects. Acquisition of any land is not going to be federally funded, so that's gonna have to be a way to, to fund that through our own, uh, revenue sources or other methods. Um, if you want to go to the next one, hope. And then finally, the, uh, long-term vision, we're looking at over, total estimate of projects over two hundred and eleven million dollars. So those are something that if this all came to fruition, would, uh, come out in the next, next twenty years or so. Um, a lot of that you see that's not federally funded is gonna be all private development through, uh, hangars and terminal areas and that sort of thing, uh, or our own local resources. And with that, I will turn it to you for any questions.
Are there, I don't, maybe I'm just missing it, Ken, but are you, anything in here for upgrading the, the terminal facility itself?
That's, I'm looking at that as more of a private-public partnership, where we get our, our fixed base operator that provides our fuel and our line services to make a capital investment in that. And whether that includes any offices for, for our staff is a totally separate, uh, point of discussion. But the terminal area, as you know, we've had some limited discussions about doing an air service feasibility study. And the thought beyond that is that, um, be the state capital. It is really inefficient for people to do business with our state government. If they have to fly commercial, that they go direct to Reno, hop in a car, drive forty minutes, come down here, turn around, drive forty minutes back, go through TSA. And so when we talk about limited, uh, commercial air service, we're looking at something of the nature of thirty-passenger that might serve directly Las Vegas at some point. That is really a, a vision that, um, is gonna require a lot more thought and, uh, research on the feasibility of that. But, uh, just from the thought standpoint, that if you could fly direct to Las Vegas out of here, that's, you can, that's pretty much a one-stop to numerous destinations, um, from, uh, Carson City. But really, the primary objective is to serve, uh, the state government, as well as the businesses that do, uh, work with the government here.
You may have covered this already, I was kind of looking at the map here. Tell me again why you need to extend the runway?
To increase the range of, of aircraft that would be able to operate out of here.
Tell me a little bit more about that. What, what do you mean by that?
Well, we have, I can give you.
Do you mean we have aircraft that can't, can't land here or take off here? I mean, I, I, some of the bigger ones I get, but.
A, as you know, that a lot of, uh, of aircraft performance is, is affected by altitude, which we're at forty-seven hundred feet above sea level, and also temperature.
Forty-seven ninety-nine.
Yeah. And so with, with, uh, I thought it was forty-seven oh-one, but depends on which part of the airport we're staying on.
Maybe I'm ninety feet off.
Yeah, right.
I hope I'm off in the right way.
But what that means is that during the middle of the summer, you're weight-restricted based upon your destination, the amount of fuel you can carry. And so an extra nine-hundred-foot runway, eight-hundred-foot runway improves, improves that performance. We're currently categorized as a B-two, uh, airport runway. So that means a category B aircraft, which is a certain, if you go down a chart and the FAA book tells you what kind of airplanes those are, they're based on approach speed, wing, uh, size of the wing, the height of the tail, that sort of thing. And so we're, we're light jet capable. Now, does that mean that, uh, Global Express and a G-four-fifty or a Falcon nine-hundred can fly in here? Yes, it can. Um, the runway's weight restricted to thirty thousand pounds, but if you're a dual-wheel, that'd give you up to sixty thousand pounds for weight. So if we got beyond that, if we got to a cat C runway, that would be, we'd be wider, it'd be a hundred feet wide, uh, the, the pavement would go to concrete. So there's, there's several factors that impact that. But we think with our master plan development, that we're gonna grow within our current, um, standard of B-two airport, but be able to get additional, uh, almost a thousand-foot of runway out of the deal and improve our, our range and the capability of aircraft utilizing the Carson City Airport. Our, our objective is to serve the community. And part of the community is the city and the economic development, as well as the, the private citizens. And that's one of the, the myths that we try to dispel at the open house, that, hey, this is just not a playground for people with their own private toys. This is a economic engine. And as we revealed in our impact study, that, uh, the airport in its current state has a sixty-five million dollar annual impact on the, on the community and impacts four hundred and ninety jobs. I think that message is important to carry out to the community and to indicate how vital the airport is to the community. So, um, I think when we looked at our master plan and the next twenty years of the airport, that, that was our objective. How do we best serve the community?
Have we ever had to close the airport because of snow?
Uh, we had the airport nodum closed a couple of times this year for snow removal, yes. And if you look through our plan, we do have a request in there for a snow equipment removal building and, and which also authorized us to get new snow equip, removal equipment.
Okay. Yeah, go.
So, um, the items in the plan here, are they in any specific order or are they just listed one through thirty?
The first slides that you saw, the yellow slides, those are our first priority. When we, when you work with the, uh, the FAA each year and you go through your capital improvement program, you kind of do a five-year lookout. And that's, that's what we've done here. So those are our immediate priorities. The snow equipment removal buildings on there, I believe. I don't have my own copy here. If it's not on there, it's in the discussion.
Well.
Yeah.
I, I just noticed that acquiring the property is down like in twenty-three and things like that. And so do you worry someone will buy it before you can? I, I guess I'm just wondering why it's so far not in your five-year plan to get it.
It takes local funds to do it. And, and we did apply for the FAA supplemental grant to acquire that land and we did not get the grant. And the reason we didn't get it is because it didn't score as high as other safety and, uh, security issues. So, um, that run, that land is not considered a priority for the FAA on land acquisition. Um, if we were building a new runway and we needed that land or a taxiway to do that, it would rank higher. But being that it's not in the line of the runway or taxiway system, it's more for future development and protection of the airport. Um, they see that as not as high as the other projects. So, um, had I, had a, in hindsight, I would have probably thrown another grant request in there at the same time, as opposed to just kind of focusing on that one. But that was a five-million-dollar ask. So we thought we'd just kind of see if, where the, where the, where the, uh, opportunity lay and that was it.
For the public, Ken, um, and for us maybe too as well, um, tell us, tell, talk about where the airport gets its money.
Well, there's, we get several funding sources, but our, probably our biggest funding source is the tax on the hangar facilities and the aircraft. Uh, or that's a big chunk. We get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from that. The other funding sources come from land leases. Uh, we also have, uh, fuel flowage fees. So every time they buy a gallon of, of jet fuel or, or a hundred low lead, we get a nickel. Um, and then we also get fee, uh, parking fees. And, um, I feel like I'm leaving something out, but we do have some, uh, well, that, we do have a temporary source of that revenue and that's that hill that we tore down several years ago. That amounts to about sixty-five thousand dollars a year right now. Uh, then we also get some fees for leasing out to self-towers to some folks and, and other opportunities. So when we, for us to really grow revenue, we need to grow based aircraft, which buy fuel and rent ground space and that sort of thing. And through economic development, as you saw, the, the, the land in the middle of the airport, that's thirty-two acres. And so we think that there's some prime development opportunity there. And we're looking at aeronautical, um, businesses to relocate and, and establish here in Carson City. So those are some of the conversations we have. Our budget's about one-point-two million a year. And pretty much through our revenue sources, it's, it's self-funded. I mean, we were profitable, uh, last year and the last, I think, for the last three or four years, when they, uh, did some lease extensions. So it is self-funding. Um, there is, as you know, through the, um, legislation, enabling legislation, uh, abhorrent tax authority through the Board of Supervisors, but that has not been exercised in the past.
I've got a couple of lights here. No, Stacy and John.
Um, uh, two questions. One, one question about the economic development component, uh, and, and the land acquisition. And, and I think I'm probably forgetting, but when you and I met, Ken, you, you talked about that land sort of north of the, uh, runway up towards Arrowhead.
Correct.
And, um, it, it is, so would, could that be more than hangars? In other words, could it, could it accommodate a business office with the hangar company? I mean, that's the intention, right? So that a business who needs to do aviation as part of their, uh, operation could also have their office or headquarters there?
There's, there's a proviso on that. If we owned it, yes. We can do aeronautical activity as well as business operations on there. Excuse me, clip bond is a good example of that type of, um, business. They do that right now.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I think that's good. I mean, I think that's great, actually. And then the other component is, I, I understand this is mostly, uh, you know, capital-based, uh, plan. Um, but I, I, I don't want you to lose sight of the issue that, um, I've had with the airport for years and that's addressing from a public safety perspective. So I want to make sure that that isn't forgotten. I don't know if you want to put it in the plan or if, if it's being addressed, but I, I just, I'd like to make sure that we, you know, try and get that settled once and for all.
I appreciate you bringing that up. And that was before the board, I think, a couple of months ago when you asked that question. And we have been, uh, diligently working on that with the city staff. Uh, we've completed the, um, the layout and the addressing component. So right before the open house, I got a couple of, of draft versions of that, that I gave an IOU out, that I'll get back to that as soon as I get done with that. Uh, Fire Marshal had been out for, uh, on the injured reserve list for a couple of, uh, months. So he and I will be, uh, reconvening. Our objective was to try to get it done by the end of fiscal year, but, but it is on our, our priority list and it will be done, I can assure you that.
Okay. And, and another thing, it really probably doesn't need to go in here, but, um, Nancy from years ago, um, and there were various reasons why we never got into it, but the, the fire station there is not a separate parcel. Um, I don't know if you know that or not. I don't know if you know that or not, Ken.
It's part of the airport land?
Correct. So the fire station.
I'm gonna start charging rent.
Yeah, exactly. The fire station, um, that land was never separated. So when the airport authority was created, they didn't want to go through that process because they were concerned about convoluting things at the legislature and they just didn't want to mess with a, a parcel change at the time. Um, and then there were, um, various internal issues that prevented us from moving forward in doing that, some on the airport side and some on the city side. Um, but it really should get done righteously because it, it's, it's, I mean, it isn't accurate. And, you know, they needed grand easements and, you know, because there's through-the-gate access to the fire department. And so I would just like to see the city and the airport authority work on that and, you know, bring it back to us to get that done once and for all.
Um, and, and our design of our fencing project, we've taken the firehouse into, um, consideration and we'll be adding a, a automatic gate there, so for airport access. Um, but yeah, that's, that's a great, uh, great neighbor to have at an airport and not have to be funded by the airport itself. And if there were any future commercial activity, you know, that would be a necessity for our index. And so one of the conversations I've had with Chief Slaman has been that, uh, about getting RF certified, if that's something that they would be interested in, in the future.
Certified?
Uh, airport firefighting and, uh, rescue. So airport rescue firefighting.
There was one time when the airport authority threw a grant, acquired, um, a specialized piece of fire apparatus.
Yeah, I think it's, it's no longer in service if I'm not machine.
No, it's not even in the city anymore. I honestly, I don't know where.
I know, I think you guys told me for that one, too.
Um, but, um, well, we did, we did offer it to the airport. Um, and, um, they, they didn't want it. Um, so we offered it to the airport to put a plow on it, actually, uh, to be able to plow snow with it.
Right.
At the time, they didn't have an interest, so.
Well, you know.
But that might be part of a grant that, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna ask them to be RF certified, they, they might need an apparatus component to that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's, that's, that's a long discussion.
Right. And, and to that point, the, the cooperative agreement is something that we've already initiated discussions on. I know that's been a couple of months now, but, you know, it does expire at the end of May next year. So that has to be a priority for us to, you know, really start working on that part as well. I'm sorry, back to you.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to compliment you. I'm, I'm a great advocate of looking out a generation and that's what this plan does. And I'm a master plan advocate, uh, as I think everybody up here is. I, I'm, um, so I want to compliment you on this, on this product, which I saw some time back out at the terminal. Um, my recollection on the economic development is that the fellow at UNR who did that for us was, uh, looking back for the most part, although saying what this does because of what we have at the moment. Um, I don't think it got into looking forward. And can you give me some kind of a guesstimate? I won't even call it an estimate, but a guesstimate on what longer runway the fixed base operator going into the terminal and the terminal going somewhere? What this could do for the community, the night lighting particularly, of course, uh, in terms of, uh, growing the airport's one-point-two million, million-dollar budget? Or is that just pie in the sky I'm asking for?
No, I, I, I think, I, I don't think you are. And I'll give you the, the broader view because we've had a lot of discussion as we were going through our strategic planning process at the same time. Our vision for the airport is to, to be the, a premier general aviation facility in the region. As Reno Tahoe International Airport is a premier commercial service airport in the region. I mean, it's the only one. Um, we have other competitors in our market. And so, uh, when anybody looks to base an aircraft somewhere, they're looking at all those other airports, Midland, Silver Springs, Carson City, Truckee, South Lake, uh, Reno Stad, Reno Tahoe.
Douglas.
Absolutely. And, uh, with that, uh, we're, we're, there's somewhat a friendly competition in, in that arena. Um, but also I think we have a, uh, an advantage that all those other airports do not have. We are in the seat of government, we're three miles from the state capital. So that, I think that gives us a competitive advantage. We have land available for immediate development. That gives us an advantage. The ability to, to extend range and to have a nighttime instrument approach restriction, the, the nighttime instrument approach restriction is a hindrance to us right now. It is a, it is a, a rock that we're stubbing our toe on, on, time and time again. When people come in here and they can't fly the instrument approach at, after sunset, they are at a disadvantage and will go elsewhere. A lot of it might be just corporate policy. It might be insurance issues. It might be a preference. Um, and to, to navigate in mountainous terrain that you're unfamiliar with at night is not a preferred operating method. So if we have that, uh, approach system in here, it will increase people that look at us for basing their operations here. Um, secondly, we have a, a, we're located in a, a low-regulation, lower-tax state than our, the fifth-largest economy to our west, which is a great neighbor to have. You can do business in the Pacific Rim and in the state of California without being based there. And you, you know that as well as anybody else, that people are moving here as a result of that. And that is impacting our community. It's impacting our community and the ability to get housing and the cost of housing, availability of employment, et cetera. But it's, you can't put a fence up around it and say, you can't come. Santa Barbara tried that a long time ago and all it did was drive up the costs of everything because now you have scarcity. So we need to make, uh, improvements that will entice them so they don't go elsewhere, so we can maintain our competitive advantage and have the, the services and the benefits of having an airport three miles from your downtown core. Um, that airport situated up against the hillside is really a benefit to the community in the, and that, um, development around it is limited. If you go to Denver, uh, International Airport, they built that. International Airport, they built that 25 miles from downtown, out in the middle of nowhere, 52 square miles of nothing. And you go by there today, and there is a city around it. And that would happen if you built this, if you were able to relocate this airport somewhere else. The airport drives that kind of business and development. People want to live close to where they, where they work. And as based on that, I think that gives us another competitive advantage. Another liability that we have is that we are landlocked. So we're going to be what we're going to be as far as an airport. So our investment in our infrastructure, our safety and security is, is money well-spent for the future use of this airport. The community would be hurt greatly, both economically speaking, but also as just the benefits of the community for safety and security if the airport were not to be here. If the city at some future time said, you know, the airport is just, we could do something better with that land, and it would be better for us, they would be making a grave mistake. So the economic engine that drives the state capitol is partly based on the need and the location of an airport such as this. So our wise investments are those in the infrastructure and in the ability to have a world-class premier facility right here where it is and not look beyond that. Unless you want to fill in Washole Lake.
Have there been any accidents at the air, at our airport that are airport-related and not pilot-related? In other words, is there, have we had any accidents caused by airport infrastructure?
God forbid, no.
Okay, good. And on the through-the-fence, could you just tell where, what properties have through-the-fence by contract?
Currently, we have through-the-fence activity through Clickbond.
Okay.
And so through-the-fence means that you can access the airport facilities from private property. And let me put a caveat on there, the FAA hates that.
Right.
They hate that for the reason that they can't regulate it. And when they're giving you federal dollars, they want to regulate. So the, the activity on that private land has to be, has to be non-aeronautical and has to be incidental to the use of that property. So if you bring an airplane onto Clickbond's ramp, the airplane is not a primary function of what Clickbond does. It's just a, a place to store the airplane and for them to do their own business travel. Another one is Mustang Squeeze Tools, which is along Chelley Taxway to the north. They have the B-25 Tootsie in there, which actually came out for the open house. Right next to that is a, it's not really through-the-fence, it's our property. It belongs to the airport. There's a, a hangar that does have access to the land side, but also the air side. And then the other one is the Endoff Facility, which is off College Parkway. As you know, when they turned the land over to the BLM, turned it over, whoever the history was on that, they carved out a little spot for the state for their own facility, and they accessed that just for, for storing their aircraft. And then the final piece up to the north, the big red triangle, or the big red rectangle you see, is privately owned. Part of, there's a fence lined in there somewhere. If you look to the, to the yellow hangars there on the end, a straight line north-south, to the left would be airport property, and to the right would be the private property. And they do have through-the-fence access needed through there. And so our concern, one, is we can't develop our land along Bravo Taxway until we identify a access points. We've had an attempt to do that, and the property owner and, and the airport were not able to agree on what that looked like. So that limits our ability to utilize that, that land. The second thing it does is that if they put incompatible use next to us, let's say somebody comes in and says, hey, oh, we want to build a, a high-tech medical equipment manufacturing facility. And they put that in there, and then they later determine that the vibration of the jets operating out of the airport now hinders their, their business. We've now got incompatible land use going on next to, to, to an airport, where if we own that, we can control that kind of activity. So through-the-fence is, is a thorn in the side of the airport. And it, you know, with Clickbond, it works out very well, because it's incidental to their business. They're an aviation business anyway, so it doesn't have a hindrance. Mustang Squeeze Tools, they're a welding shop. You know, they're making all kinds of racket, hooting and hauling and carrying on in there. And so I don't think that's really a, a use. It's not compatible with the airport.
Maybe it's talking stories out of school, but are there, is there a helicopter school looking to settle it?
I'm not familiar with a helicopter school. I think there's been one here in the past. Have, do I have contacts currently with different companies looking to relocate here? Yes. Do I have a letter of intent from anybody specifying anything? No. Does somebody whisper in my ear and say, yeah, we're going to do this or that? I hear a lot of that. But, you know, until somebody signs something, I don't really consider it a deal.
Well, I know you're keeping an eye on what happens in Reno, and not that we want to poach business, but keep your eye on it, because for some of those businesses in Reno, we have a better location for those folks.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. And I, and I, I, I love my friends in Reno, and they're a different operation than we are. And so how we can compatibly work together, and I'm all about that.
Good. All right. Any other questions?
No, but I just want to say the mayor is a diplomat. If you can poach business, poach it.
He said it right.
I think if we have a competitive advantage, we'd like to, we'd like to ensure that we take advantage of it.
All right. Before you leave, let me ask a public comment. Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Okay, and I, I don't, you know, Ken, I think you have enough from us to know what, you know, what we're thinking about. We're not, we're not experts up here. John, John is on, you know, airport stuff. So I don't think a motion is in order for us to say, you know, what you're doing is right or wrong. But I think, you know, where we're coming from in terms of economic development. And, and I think Stacy had a couple of other things that were on the, on the, should be on the drawing board. That's the, the numbering system that we use at the airport, and also doing MOU with the fire, fire station.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're working on both of those things.
Pardon me?
And splitting the parcel.
And splitting the parcel.
Yeah, we'll look at that in a cooperative agreement. There's a couple of other things that we have to discuss in that, and I think that that's for another day. I, I know I've taken way more, way more time that was actually planned.
It's important we hear about these things, Ken. And it's nice to know that you're, you're looking down the road and doing this, because, you know, this pays off dividends and money for the FAA when, if it's done correctly. So go for it.
And it pays off for the community, because, you know, that money cycles through here. And it, it's, and if I can, while, while I have the opportunity, I want to just thank the, the Board of Supervisors, but the city staff for graciously really bringing me into conversations and, you know, enlightening me where I need enlightening and guiding me through the process. It's been, you know, I've only been here a little over a year, but, you know, I feel like I've been here much longer just based upon the relationships I've been able to develop with, with everybody here. So it's, it makes everybody's job easier, and it's, I got to say, it's really a pleasure. I mean, public work stepped up really big for us for the open house and that sort of stuff. And, you know, I, I want to be able to return those favors when I get the opportunity, and I, I enjoy it very much.
I just, I, you know, I've, I've done, I've had a lot of dealings with the airport and the airport authority over the years when I was employed with the city. And I just got to compliment you, Ken, on your professionalism and, in my opinion, professionalizing the airport authority. You've really brought it to a higher level, and it's very clear that you understand the impact the airport has in the community. And I feel your passion. And I just want to thank you for doing a great job. And really, it's top-notch, and you've done wonders. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I, I, I think that together, we can really do some great things for the community. And I, and I know that's where the heart of the board is and the city staff. Everybody exudes that confidence about who they're really working for, and that's for the common taxpayer. And I, and I think that's our mission. So thank you very much.
Okay, one last stupid question. Can we land Air Force One here and take off Air Force One?
We could probably land him here, but we'd probably have to take it apart to get it out. I don't think we want to land it here.
All right.
No. But how about Marine One?
Marine One? Let's do that. All right, we can do that.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Have a happy fourth, everybody.
Same to you. All right. Let's now take up Noxious Weeds. This is our item number 11. Sean, you gonna do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You got some help coming up with you here?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I need, I need support.
You need support. That's good. Yeah, yeah.
The brains of this group. That's the basic. So thank you very much.
You know, this is always one of those things on, on weed, noxious weeds, you say, you know, weeds are weeds. But, you know, they're, they're noxious for a reason.
Yes, they are. And that's, that's kind of what we're going to get into today. I don't want to take up too much of your time. So for the record, my name is Sean Gethardt. I am the Noxious Weeds Coordinator for the Nevada Department of Agriculture. And with me is...
Lindsay Boyer, Senior Natural Resource Specialist for Carson City Open Space.
We know Lindsay.
So I'll jump right into it. So a definition of a noxious weed is any species of plant which is or is likely to be a public nuisance, detrimental or destructive, and difficult to control. Noxious weeds have been brought in over the years through seeds and feed and ornamental plants. Roughly 80% of the federal-listed noxious weeds were brought into this country via the ornamental horticultural industry. And I always share that because I hear frequently, why are these noxious weeds? Because they're so pretty. So, you know, that, that kind of puts it in perspective. Those pretty plants have just kind of gotten away and, and taken over some areas. And a good example of this is the picture that you have there on your slide. This is a purple loose dife. This was sold widely in the ornamental horticultural industry from the 80s into the early 90s. And it's a riparian species. It can get to about six by six feet tall and produce 2 million seeds a year. And this picture here was taken in sparks up by, over by some of the golf courses, and it has completely taken over some of the riparian areas. The Nevada Department of Agriculture, through statute, has been given the authority to designate noxious weeds to be put on the list requiring control. It is a lengthy process. I just recently, in August of last year, was legislatively approved to put on seven new additional species, and that was one of the catalysts to me presenting here today. Those are the weeds are broken down to three are grassy weed species that are specific to northern Nevada. Two are aquatic species that we are concerned with threatening Lake Tahoe. And the other two are specific to southern Nevada. Oops. Of the 54 noxious weeds that we have on the list, they are broken down into A, B, and C categories. And what that represents is the distribution of that weed throughout the state. An A-rated weed is one that is found in maybe one county and one or two small populations, or are not here at all, but are encroaching from bordering states, and we are concerned about that. Transcending down to C-rated weeds, which are widespread throughout the whole entire state. An in-state statute declares every person owning, controlling, or occupying lands in the state in every county shall control all weeds declared noxious. I like to preface the word control. It doesn't say eradication. Yes, would I like to see eradication of an A-rated weed that we found, just one small population of that? Yes, absolutely, 100%. But we realize that a C-rated weed that's so widespread throughout the, the whole entire state, the likelihood of eradicating that is, is pretty much zero. So why we say control is that if you have a noxious weed on your property, and it's not on your neighboring property, it is, it is your job to control it, to prevent that from spreading into other neighboring properties. And this is just a snapshot of the noxious weed data that we have compiled throughout the area. A lot of this, I believe, was collected from Lindsay's work. She's had, she's done a great job of, of doing survey work for us to let us know where these noxious weed sightings are. What's useful about this information is that in the future, if there is ever grant funding available, we can isolate some, some, some areas that are a primary concern that we can address with that funding. It also gives us a snapshot of, of what priority species that we have there, such as you'll see the A category there. You've got orangutan watermill foil, perennial south thistle, spotted apeweed, and yellow star thistle. And this is just a pie chart, kind of more visually appealing, just showing you what problems that we have. And you can see without a doubt that perennial pepper weed, often called tall whitetop, is the, the primary weed that we have distributed out throughout the whole city. So to jump into some of the weeds that we do have in this area, one of them is a Canada thistle. This is an agricultural concern. We see this a lot in alfalfa fields. It's a perennial plant spread by roots and seeds. It, it likes a moist area. It grows in dense patches. And boy, how do you don't really want to get your hands on this, because just looking at it, it'll, it'll hurt your hands. It's, it's got thorns everywhere on it. It gets to about maybe three feet tall, two to three feet tall, producing an abundance of purple flowers at the ends of the branches. And as it goes to seed, you'll see more of a whitish powder, almost like a cottonwood kind of flow off it. That, that's definitely an indication of, of the Canada thistle. It's difficult to control with a herbicide, because it's often mixed in with desirable species. But they're finding that there are some herbicides that if you apply that to this plant later on in the season, as it's kind of going dormant, and it's pulling its starches and sugars down to the root system, it can carry that chemical down into there, and you'll have a pretty good success. One that you probably see very frequently along the road sides is poison hemlock. This is a biennial plant. And what I mean by that is that it produces vegetative growth the first year, and then the second year, it produces the, the flower and the seed. It can get very tall. It can get six feet plus. It's poisonous to livestock as well as humans. It is, it's very easily to identify it, not only just from the, the flowers that you see there, but if you look closely to the stems of the plant, you'll see a very characteristic purple blotch all over the stem of it. So that's one way to make sure that, hey, is that poison hemlock? If you look close, you'll see purple spots on, on the branches and the stems. Because it's a biennial plant, and it produces the vegetative growth the first year, and then following that, the seed, hand removal or just digging up the rosettes with a shovel can be an effective means of control, but you have to be diligent about it. The problem that we're finding in, in some of the areas is that because it likes water, then accessing the site where there's a large infestation of this, you can't get equipment in there. It's even hard to walk in there, because there's so much water.
It just, it strikes me as I'm sitting here that we're now in a position where we're doing curbside green waste collection in Carson. It just started this month. So I'm curious about people eradicating noxious weeds in their own yard by either digging them up or pulling them, and then placing that noxious weed in the green waste container and sending it off to Full Circle Compost to get mixed. Is that something we probably should not be doing? And if that's the case, that, you know, we, we probably need to have, go to you, some sort of public awareness of that. Because I, I mean, if we have green waste, and I know I filled mine up for the first pickup, if I have weeds like this, that's where I'm going to put them. So I'm kind of wondering if that's...
You want to respond to that?
Something we shouldn't be doing.
Well, technically, the law is that any noxious weed removal you do, you're supposed to bag it up and take it immediately to the landfill. So that's the intention. But, you know, due to lack of education or otherwise, people might not be aware of that. And I am not familiar with the green waste program, so I, that whole concept never crossed my mind. But I think it's a great point to bring up, and...
So it wouldn't be good?
It would not be good, especially like...
It's going to happen.
Yeah. Like perennial pepper weed, for example, can reproduce from just an inch segment of root.
Yeah.
So I think that would be something that we could, you know, definitely start with an awareness campaign of, you know, these weeds are, are not considered green waste. They need to go to the landfill specifically.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So yeah, that's a great point. Thank you.
I would, I would like to add one thing about that, though. It's a, it's a great observation that you made. And, but it's my understanding, too, though, that in the process of creating compost from green waste, it has... from green waste, it has to reach a certain internal temperature in the core of of the compost pile. Now, obviously, the owner of of Full Circle Compost can give you a whole presentation on this. He's a very excitable guy. Um, but it's my understanding that pathogens, as well as all seed and and stem fragments, are 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 get so hot that they're turned into mush and they're not propagated at that point.
So, so if one erroneously finds its way in, we're not going to contaminate the the food source, so to speak?
That that's my understanding. I don't want it to speak out of term because I'm not a compost specialist, but it's my understanding.
Just an interesting question.
It has to reach a certain temperature. Otherwise, it can't be classified as compost.
Sorry.
Great, no, great question. Um, one thing, and I-
I have an answer to that, though. And let us know what that is. I mean, okay. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. Um, one thing, one plant that we that me and Lindsay are are, would you agree that this is probably our number one that we're concerned with, is the yellow star thistle? Um, be that my office is in Sparks and I do a lot of survey work around the Reno-Sparks area, I'm seeing this widespread and it's rapidly becoming a huge problem. And this, uh, yellow star thistle is an annual plant, so it produces vegetative growth, can get up to about three feet tall, and it's very densely packed. And it has thorns on the very tops of the yellow flower, so it's makes it very difficult to walk through it once you have a thick stand. We're seeing this on three ninety-five. We've already had a few sightings of it here in Carson City, but Lindsay has jumped right on top of it. But this is probably our number one priority that we have in our open spaces and some of our wildland habitat areas because it seems to be able to to naturalize in in urban settings as well as some of the the native areas. What's also difficult about this plant is, once it puts on vegetative growth at the very bottom of the rosette, that's where most of the leaves are, where you want to use a herbicide to control it. But once it starts to bolt, as you see there, there's no leaf material. So, there's not a lot of stowmates in in that in that leaf to get the chemical in. So, we're finding it challenging on the timing issue when to treat it with a herbicide. What we're also finding is that is that if you mow it over with a lawnmower, the plant will start to grow prostrate underneath the mower blades. So, it this is definitely going to be a challenge. And and I think what we walk away with as our biggest concern is that because it leaves a dead biomass of about three feet tall, very dense, that becomes fire fuel. And because it can naturalize in our open spaces, that fuel can really contribute to a a lot of wildland fires. Uh, and our aquatic species that we have our primary concern is Eurasian water milfoil. Did you want to add? Do you want to talk about this one? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so again, for the record, Lindsay Boyer, Natural Resource Specialist. Um, Eurasian water milfoil is an aquatic plant, um, that was first discovered in Carson City in two thousand fifteen. We discovered it in the Mexican ditch. Um, and then, as you guys recall, the floods of two thousand seventeen happened and it kind of flushed the whole population away. And, uh, the problem went away for a while. Um, but as of last summer, we rediscovered a population in the Mexican ditch. And at this point, it's, um, taken over pretty much the entirety of the ditch and any other ditches that are fed by the Mexican ditch. Um, the problem with this plant, as you can see kind of in that lower picture, is that it grows extremely thick. It'll start to clog up the the irrigation ditches, um, and any of those diversion structures that we we need to get water out to ranches and things. Um, so it is a problem, and, um, it's a a big problem in Lake Tahoe as well. And so, we've been doing, uh, tons and tons of research and talking with other local jurisdictions to figure out what it is that they're doing. Um, it's a problem in the Truckee River as well, so, um, it's kind of on all sides. People are dealing with this issue, and it's just a really successful plant. Um, it's another one that can reproduce from a really small root structure. Um, dredging can make the problem worse. Um, using chemical herbicide in a waterway that feeds stock water as well as agricultural land is not an option. Um, there are some treatments using UVC light that we're looking into, but that are quite expensive, so we're doing some trials there. Um, so, at this point, we've found more solutions that won't work in our system than what we have found that will. Um, but I currently have, uh, an intern who's working with us for the summer, and one of her projects is going to be, um, doing research and writing up a management plan and mapping this plant out. So, um, we're at least keeping on the the pulse of it, but we have, uh, no idea what to do.
Interesting statement. You know, there's nothing wrong. That's that's real transparency in government. We have no idea.
Unfortunately, we'd have to concur.
I mean, you know, it is what it is, so it's good. It's all right.
In fact, I wanted, um, to add to this very next slide is, uh, um, several of my staff, as well as Lindsay and and Marina Desborough, who worked with her, uh, we tried, attempted to do a manual removal of this Eurasian water milfoil in the in the ditch, uh, last year. And, uh, because the sediment on the bottom of that ditch is so silty that we realized very quickly that our our we would sink almost down to our knees, and it was hard to 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 move around. And in fact, and then it created so much clouds of dust. While we're in there, we couldn't really find the plant effectively. So, it was, we tried, but it's just definitely going to be a challenge. So, some of the things that the state and and the counties collaborate with is 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 definitely communication on on prioritizing certain weeds. Uh, we do have, uh, inspector, seasonal inspector staff that will help do survey work and mapping. And then if if we have funding available, we always, uh, send off, uh, RFPs and ask for proposals to be submitted for certain projects. Um, the Nevada Department of Agriculture also has an wheat abatement program. And how this works is, um, there's in-state statute, we have a roughly a hundred thousand dollar in there for to use that funding to have the counties proceed with abatement proceedings, and we will cover eighty percent of the cost of that abatement. However, the county has to be willing to put a lien on the property, and in the event that the property is sold, then the county will reimburse that fund back to the state. In the process of of that, if they're if the county's willing to move forward with an abatement, we will work diligently so that there it's the most efficient and cost-efficient way to proceed with doing the abatement. The Nevada Department of Agriculture also works with conservation districts, and we also help develop what's referred to as cooperative weed management associations, one of which Lindsay is the president of. We just recently started the Washoe Story Cooperative Weed Management Association. And then, once that association becomes a nonprofit entity, they can apply for federal funds that are, uh, that are funded to the Department of Ag that we send off through an RFP. And this is just a snapshot of some of the cooperative weed management associations that we have throughout the state. The counties can also, if they so choose, to become classified as a weed district. And the benefit of becoming a weed district is that, in addition to requiring the control of the fifty-four noxious weeds on the state list, if the county or the city finds that there is another weed that they are most concerned with, once they become a weed district and statute, they can put that weed on their list, requiring the residents of that area to control that as well. And this is a li- a list of the weed districts that we have. We have eleven of them. One of the things that Lindsay is doing quite extensively is the use of biocontrol agents, so I'm going to go ahead and let her talk about this one as well.
So, this is an example of using integrated pest management and having kind of another tool in our toolbox. So, Sean talked about Canada thistle earlier and how it's a real challenge to treat because it often grows, um, with riparian vegetation and other things that we would like to have around. Um, and so, working with Sean and the Colorado Department of Agriculture, we learned about this, um, this rust fungus that only targets Canada thistle. Um, it's naturally occurring with Canada thistle. Um, it's basically just a n- natural predator of the of the plant. Um, and what it does is, you can see it kind of, um, inoculates under the leaves there. Those are little spores from the fungus. Um, and it makes it so the plant just doesn't reproduce very effectively, um, and it can significantly reduce big stands of Canada thistle. Um, and so, in trying to, you know, use other tools besides just herbicide, this was something that we really wanted to try out and see if it worked. Um, so we did a treatment, um, last fall, and we monitored this spring to see if it was effective. And we didn't see any inoculation this year, which isn't necessarily, um, bad. And so, we're going to try that again this year and see if we can't get that to take. Um, so it is a long-term, um, process, but in in the long run, especially since these plants tend to grow next to waterways and rivers, um, this is a way to try to avoid using herbicide when we can.
And then, Lindsay, just just to confirm that that then that rust fungus doesn't itself become a problem if it takes over and destroys the Canadian thistle, correct?
Correct. It only targets Canada thistle. It doesn't impact any other plants, um, wildlife, animals, anything, so.
Another program that the state has is the cooperative, uh, excuse me, the Certified Weed Free Forge and Gravel Program. And how this works is that if a producer of gravel or forged grain or straw is wanting to use that material on federal lands or federally funded projects, this is highway construction projects, we will send out an inspector to, say, that gravel pit and do a survey to determine that there is no propagated noxious weeds in that site. Once we determine that it's it's clean of those noxious weeds, we will certify it as weed-free, and then that gravel or that forged material can be used on, as I said, highway construction projects, as well as fire restoration projects through waddles or hay bales for erosion control. We're really pushing this product with Nevada Division, or excuse me, Nevada Department of Transportation. And, um, so we're we're hoping that NDOTS is is going to be using that on some highway construction projects. Rightly so, because you can imagine if you have a section of road which doesn't have noxious weeds and they excavate that, and then they put in a base of gravel that's contaminated with noxious weeds, you've just moved the problem around. So, that's really, we're really educating the counties about that. And getting close to the end here is the, uh, we want to educate you on the use of the EDMAP system, and this is what Lindsay is using, as well as many of the our federal and private partners in controlling noxious weeds and mapping them. And how the EDMAP system works is that, because since everybody carries a cell phone, you can download the app onto your phone. Once you have the map app on your phone, you can click on it and it automatically takes your GPS location. If you have a noxious weed that you're by, you can take a picture of that noxious weed and it gets uploaded into a larger system that you see here on this map. That uploaded, uh, data and the picture goes to a number of different verifiers, one being Lindsay, one being me. And we look at the photograph to determine that, yes, that is one of our noxious weeds. Once we verify it is noxious weed, it goes into a larger system, and this EDMAP system is nationwide. The benefit of that is, is that we can determine from Oregon, California, uh, Utah, Arizona, determine what species of weeds are encroaching into Nevada, and we can protect our borders a bit more. So, some of the challenges that we crews face, well, I think this picture maybe not do a very good job. This is the day that we did the Eurasian water milfoil poll. Even though we're all smiling there, it was a lot of work, but, uh, we definitely like to to work with Lindsay's group. Um, some of the challenges that we crews face is the removal of the biomass, and that's why I listed fire fuel accumulation, one being the yellow star thistle. If you don't remove the the dead plant from last year, you're not going to be able to get down to the new plants underneath to to do a chemical application or even mowing it. Weeds also spread from traffic through off-road vehicles. There's a public perception problem when crews are out there spraying herbicides. We see we frequently receive calls, uh, from private citizens concerned when they see, you know, crews spraying chemicals, especially when they're wearing the white suits, which they're often required to do. Access is always a challenge in some cases. Uh, funding shortages is probably number one. Chemical storage, as well as absentee landowners. The biggest challenge that I have as a noxious weed coordinator, when I'm trying to, if I have an a noxious weed infestation on a piece of property, when I find out who owns it, it's it gives me about twenty different names, so I can't find the accountable person to address the issue. So, through the necessary funding sources, weeds are controlled on county roads and rights of ways, open spaces and parks, private landowners, uh, which cover herbicides, personal protective equipment, storage, equipment, and personnel. And why be concerned? Now, uh, noxious weeds, they have an impact on our native plant species, wildlife habitat, agricultural production, property values. And what I mean by that is that if you have an infestation that you neglect to address the first year, the problem is it's going to grow exponentially and the costs thereof the following year. Water quality and clarity issues, as well as just the overall cost of controlling noxious weeds. You have anything to add? No. And that's it.
Any questions, either Lindsay or Sean? Lindsay, let me ask you a question. We talked about public health issues. What types of herbicides are we using today? Are any organic? Or is organic not what it's all cranked up to be? Or just talk a little bit about that if you could.
Sure. Good question. So, um, I think everyone knows that, you know, herbicides are a hot topic, um, in the news, and, um, you know, there definitely are some some health concerns. So, um, within Carson City Open Space and the Weed Coalition, um, we primarily use a a few products, but one of them's called Tellar. Um, it's not a restricted use, um, and it's one that, you know, as far as we're aware, doesn't cause any of the health problems that are being reported in the news. Um, with any herbicide, it's important that you read the label and that it's used appropriately. Um, personal protective equipment is huge. I think a lot of the stories that we hear about people who are being impacted, um, there's questions about, you know, whether or not they were following the label and and being safe as they could. Um, so I think that's always something to remind people of, is that, you know, these are dangerous chemicals and you need to dress appropriately and and pay attention to the wind and the temperature and all those things that are outlined on the label. Um, so just being armed with knowledge, I think, is important to staying safe. Um, in regards to organic herbicides specifically, the issue with organics is that they're not systemic. So, what that means is they don't, um, move the chemical from the leaf structure in down to the roots. They just kind of burn the leaves. Um, so for most of our problem noxious weed species, they are perennial, which means that if you don't get the poison down to the roots, then you're not going to be effective in your control. You're just going to burn the leaves but not kill the plant. Um, and so, while organics are great and are a great solution, maybe within, um, your own home, depending on what kind of plant species you have, um, they're just not effective for the battle that we are up against.
How are we doing on, uh, uh, controlling cheat grass and things of that nature with our animal folks? Lambs?
Sheep, yes. Um, so, yeah, we're we are in our, I believe, our thirteenth, um, or fourteenth year of running the sheep program here in Carson City. And, um, I think it's a really effective tool. I mean, even when we've had fires in and around the area where we have the sheep grazed, um, they're much less intense, they burn out much easier. Um, we've been able to see some really good comparisons with fires in and and out of the area. Um, and we're working with the rancher next year to possibly bring in two bands of sheep so that we can work them in opposite directions and just get even more effective control.
Anybody else doing that? Any other communities doing that?
So, the rancher that we work with, he does do some work in Washoe County, um, and he has some allotments with the BLM and and works with the Forest Service. So, he in particular is working with a few other communities. Um, and there are some folks who do goat grazing. Um, but we really are kind of at the forefront, I think, of of working on this cheat gas cheat grass problem. Um, and there's actually a really great article that came out yesterday, um, that featured our our program, as well as several other, um, researchers and people who are focused on the cheat grass problem in the in the West, and so, um...
Where was that article?
Um, I will have to double-check the source, but I'd be happy to send it to you.
Sure. I think all of us would be want to read it.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll send that along.
All right. Any other questions? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. You know, it's always- You know, it's always, it's always an interesting update on weeds because it, no matter what we do, you know, they never seem to go away. They keep coming back. You know, I often.
Sean's appreciative of that.
Job security there.
You know, I often wonder, you know, why is it the weeds grow so fast and the rest of the plants kind of take their time? You know, and, you know, one other question I have, just for general information, and you may not know the answer. How did all this get started? Is it human development that's doing all this? Or what is it? People, is it coming from other areas in the world? What's going on?
Well, if you, I think that if you do look at our data, it would suggest that human development is a major catalyst to movement of noxious weeds or introduction of noxious weeds. You don't see, I drive all around the state. I don't see noxious weeds out in the middle of, you know, of our rangelands out between Tonopah and Hawthorne. I only see it in, I do see it, but it seems to always start from within the areas of urban industrial development.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? Board? Anybody? I don't see any. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, yeah, we'll be, I'll reset for 10 minutes, or thereabout, if we need more. Okay. This is back to order. We're now, we pulled item 12, that's regarding the library and the hub. Let's go to finance. This is a certification, the tax rate is kind of pro forma, but Sherri, why don't you tell us what we're doing and why we do it? We'll go from there.
Yes, thank you. Sherri Russell, CFO for the record. This is an annual resolution. We do this every year. It includes the property tax rate approved in the Carson City and redevelopment fiscal year 2020 budget and certified by the Department of Taxation at 3.57 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. I'd like to take a moment to thank Pam, the Deputy CFO and City Manager, for getting this together for me while I was on vacation.
But that's the number we use for our budget as well?
Yes.
So we've been through the, just so everybody here is at home, this is not just pulling a number out?
No, we've been talking about this number since February, using this 3.57.
All right. Any public comment on this before we go to the board? Anybody? Board, somebody got it?
2019 R-18. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019 R-18.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Carried. Okay. Now let's take up the planning items. Ms. Sullivan, you're going to do this, right? Okay, so let's take up item 14 Alpha. This is on second reading, Bill Number 105 relating to the zoning map, amendment to the zoning, an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning from single-family one acre to single-family 12,000 on six properties located at 93 Dean Court, 94 Dean Court, 95, 96, 97, Dean Court and 4376 North Gate Lane. Any changes, anything from first reading?
No.
Okay. Public comment on this issue? Motion's in order.
Number?
2019 dash seven.
I move to adopt Bill Number 105 on second reading, ordinance number 2019 dash seven.
Second. There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Okay, let's take up 14 Bravo. This is the second reading again on Bill Number 106 relating to an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning from conservation reserve to public regional on a 20-acre parcel located on the north side of Highway 50 West. Any public comment on this issue? Don't see any public comment that you've received?
No, sir.
Board, we ready? Motion's in order.
I can do it.
Okay.
I move to adopt Bill Number 106 on second reading, ordinance number 2019 dash eight.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Get it? There we are. Okay. Let's take up now 14 Charlie. This is discussion and possible action to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 107, an ordinance relating to amendment to the zoning map to change zoning from conservation reserve to single-family one acre on planned unit development to public community on two parcels totaling 206 acres located south of Timberline. Any comments from, since first reading?
No, sir.
Public comment, anybody? Board? Ready for a second? Okay.
I'll do it.
Do it.
I move to adopt Bill Number 107 on second reading, ordinance number 2019 dash nine.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Okay, passed. Let's take up 14 Delta. This is second reading also on Bill Number 108, an ordinance regarding an amendment to zoning map to change the zoning from limited industrial to general commercial on nine properties located along Retail Drive and Hot Springs Road and Market Street and College Parkway. Any comments from, that you've received since first reading? Hope?
No, sir.
You don't say that with such vigor. Okay, I'm kidding you. Public comment? Board, ready for motion?
Yep. I move to adopt Bill Number 108 on second reading, ordinance number 2019 dash ten.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Okay. I think that does it for the agenda. Like I said, we'll take up item, we'll take up the library and the hub first meeting in August. We'll now move to item number 15. This is under Board of Supervisors Non-Action Items. Board, we got anything under any of these topics here? Anybody?
Yeah, I just, at our CTA board meeting a week ago, we agreed to enter into an agreement with another, for another bike event for Carson City to host another bike event. It's an off-road event. The date isn't set yet. You saw a little bit in the paper about it. It's essentially, they're calling it a gravel road event. So it's by a group called Bike Monkey. The basis for it will be, this is alternative, obviously, and permits have to be obtained and all that, but looking at the Edmund Sports Complex as the starting point and ending point for the race and basically all out in the pine nuts. So all out into El Dorado Canyon in Carson, down into Douglas County and back up into Carson. They anticipate first-year attendance between 400 to 500 people. Some of their bigger events go upwards of 1,500 to 2,500 participants. So it's a three-year agreement, and CTA is a sponsor of the agreement to the tune of 23,000 a year. And the first event, should everything fall into place, would be next spring, summer, sometimes. They don't have the date yet. Little less dependent upon the snow, so they can have it a little bit earlier in the season. You know, it could be a late April through May event because you don't have to worry about snow-covered roads because it just doesn't happen out there. But it, Bike Monkey puts on several successful events and their biggest events in Santa Rosa, California. So it's exciting and it, you know, I like it because it promotes what we have, and that's our open space, and we have a lot of it, so.
We have a lot of it. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I attended the W N D D, Western Nevada Development District, meeting and we went. I attended the W N D D, Western Nevada Development District, meeting, and we went, we toured the Pentley Distillery down there. It was really quite interesting. If you haven't been, I urge everybody to check it out. And also, Nancy, I'd like you to look into what we can do about getting our SEDS stuff. I know you've already talked with them, but for next year, you know, because we had a SEDS meeting, I was in Chicago at the time, but if you put in your economic development ideas, they can fund some things or help get grants for some things perhaps.
Do they do public tours at Pentley?
Yeah, I think you have to pay to go through it, but yeah, we, Nevada Energy sponsored that, so we didn't have to pay. Got a little vodka and a little gin. Kind of fun, though. It's an interesting facility.
Little vodka and a little gin? I didn't hear that.
Well, yeah, I was hoping he would have brought some samples to us, but.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, I poured them out and said you have to drink them right away.
Anybody got anything else? Let me just say, things coming up, July 13th, that's a Saturday, our order of the Eastern Stars having its Carson City Downtown Revival Car Show, Carson Street will be closed for a car show. That's usually a lot of fun. What else is going on? Anybody?
Yeah, I got, so Advocates for Non-Domestic Violence Taste of Downtown, you know, in my mind, one of the premier Carson City events is July 20th, so it's a week from this, two weeks from this Saturday, sorry, two weeks from this Saturday. And just want to put in a plug for that and remind people that I know a lot of people just go downtown and walk around and don't sample the food, but I'd like to put in a plug for AEDV because it is a fundraiser for them, you know, to buy a ticket, get a wristband, and sample the food. So it's a great event. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say they're doing a great job over at the BAC on the Levitt Series. I don't know if anybody's attended one. I was out of town one week and didn't care for the reggae, but I'll be going Saturday night probably, and I understand they're getting great counts.
They're getting great counts, yeah. AB 81 from the last legislative session is creation of Indigent Defense Council. Dan, you guys probably know more about this, but that commission is gonna be stood up probably first part of August. NACO is nominated for, I'm one of those, along with Joni Eastly, Lorna Wickman from Tonopah, and Mary Walker's gonna be also a NACO representative. The governor has to confirm that, but they're gonna, they're gonna move that really quick. We met yesterday with the governor's legal counsel, Bryn Gibson, and it's gonna be cranked up, so it's about all I've got here today. Anybody else got anything?
I just remembered, I think the Symphony Association is having something Sunday night, and I'd have to look it up on my pad, and I don't want to fire that up, but you might check into the fact that they're having a, sort of an annual meeting, I believe.
The Symphony?
Eleanor and David Symphony.
Yes.
And I believe it's gonna be over at the 55 Lake area, just off of Curry, and you can check it out.
Glen Manor?
Glen Manor, exactly, yes.
Yeah, took me a second, about the 55 and older, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'd have to fire this up to get the exact, but I believe it's Sunday night.
Just have one question of everybody here, and I don't want to violate the omen law, where are we on creating a master calendar for all events that are going on that we kind of know of? Is the CTA doing any of that?
With the Chamber.
I think the Chamber kind of does, but I don't know if they catch everything. I think CTA is trying to do that. I'll bring that up as a point of discussion at the next CTA meet.
I'll bring that up at the next point of discussion at the CTA meeting. We don't have a meeting in July, we have a meeting in August, but that seems like the natural place for it to live, and we certainly share that with the city's website. So I'll talk to Dave about that. So CTA's in the middle of doing a complete redesign on our webpage, so it will be down the road, but I'll make sure that we try and get a master calendar included. It's always been one of the frustrating parts for me as a resident here to have a solid place to go to catch all those things. So, yeah, good point, thank you.
I think CTA was doing that when they were under their former name and Joel and Kyle were there, but it never, it never pulls together because it's kind of hard to get all the information.
It is hard, but I, you know, I think Dave, Dave has a lot of good contacts being with the state, you know, he's well-connected, and not that they weren't in the past, I just, you know, with the redesign of the website, it's a little clunky to move around now, and hopefully, you know, we just approved a contract with a web designer and a marketing team, and so, you know, we should be moving down that path pretty quick here.
Even if they're doing the web design and they can have a load, load your event here instead of the CTA having to do it where people can post into it.
Right, or at least send it, but, you know, the other part of that is that, and I refer Dave to both Hope and the City Manager's office, they're going to have a business component to their website, so, you know, be visitcarsoncity dot, I forget if it's dot com or dot org, sorry, but they'll also have visitcarsoncity.biz. And the idea there is that the businesses in the community in that tourist industry can use that for links to their business, but I think it's a natural place for people who are looking to relocate their businesses here to get some general information about Carson City and where to go to, you know, to get that information, whether it's an NDA or community development or the library or, but community resources for businesses to relocate here. So I think there's a real opportunity there.
Anything else? You know, I got an email from Kurt Meyer. I'll just read a little bit about this. This is from a woman named Lauren Woolridge regarding our Carson Off-Road, the Off-Road Show, and I'll just read part of the email. Says, "So I thought it'd be cool if you guys heard the story of Kelly Cantor and her son. They finished dead last this past weekend at the Carson City Epic Ride 50-miler. Kelly is a physical therapist, cancer survivor, living with lupus and a masters athlete. She is a mother of two and works two jobs. She and her older son, 17-years-old local high school senior, ride together most weekends and decided to do the 50 together. From a physical standpoint, he could have easily finished the race a couple of hours ahead of her, but decided to stay with her for the whole race. She was worried about making the cutoff at Spooner. Her son Ian pushed her and encouraged her the whole way up Kings Canyon, and they made the cutoff by four minutes. Then at Red House, Ian had a slash knee tire which required them to put a tube in it. They ended up finishing the race dead last, and it feels so much more than that. It's a story of resilience, resilient, boy, I gotta get ready, resiliency, support, and family." That's kind of the things that you hear, good stories about, you know, people are overcoming adversity in the world and in their lives, and, you know, we don't do epic rides just for that, but I'll tell you that, you know, it's heartwarming to see people use, you know, be able to participate in an event such as that, and because it gives you a good, a good positive attitude and outlook for, you know, for the future. And I'll never, and I don't usually do this, but I'll say this, you know, on my own, you know, I've had cancer and I finished 35 shots of radiation, and one of my goals was to finish the Prison Hill Half Marathon again, which I did after 35 treatments. It took me four hours, I was dragging, there was no food left, everybody was gone when I got in. But you know what? You look at those things and their goals that you set in your life, and they really help, you know, if you're undergoing adversity, I don't mean to tell stories like that, but, you know, it's kind of, kind of interesting that people, you know, do value education and sports in particular, you know, things of that nature, to help get through particularly all kinds of forms of adversity. So I'll shut up on that one. John, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, that's inspirational, and you gave me time to look this up. It's the end of fiscal year party by the Carson City Symphony Association. It's Sunday, July 7th, 6:30 PM, and it's at Glen Manor, whatever it's called, yeah. So, should be interesting, so, now you know.
You know, on the epic rides, I volunteered on Saturday afternoon at the Boys and Girls Club beer booth, and every rider, and I like to volunteer there because every rider gets a free beer, and Saturday is the amateur day. And I do that because I think those are the people that choose to come here, they're, a lot of them are locals, and the pros follow the events, so they have a reason to come anyway, but those amateurs choose to come here and ride in this event. And, you know, I'm asking them, you know, what three things do you like about this and why do you come here? And, you know, almost without a doubt, the scenery and the course and the spectacular landscape that we have. Number two, how well-run the event is and how embracing the community is, and number three, how friendly everybody is in our community. So, you know, those three things, almost to a person, it's almost exactly the same when I ask them that question every year. And so I just, I wanted to share that with people because it's meaningful as, you know, someone that lives here to, that we all appreciate those same things, you know?
It's how communities survive and are built, and that's a sign of a good community. So, anything else? Anybody? Concluding public comment, anybody? Are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's objection, we're adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting.